Yeah. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a committee of a whole meeting tonight. It's a little bit after 5:30 on November 18th, 2019. Nancy, I believe, should be here. I haven't heard from her, as anyone else. Okay? And I know Kurt Rebholz is on his way back from good treatment in Houston. And so he is excused absent tonight, but we do recognize a quorum tonight. Why don't we stand for the pledge?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How many students are here as part of the government class that requires you to be here? Cool. Well, we are going to have a two-hour meeting tonight, and we're going to stop right at 7:30. So there's going to be, I'm sure, plenty of discussion from our agenda, but at a committee meeting, we don't vote on anything. We are making decisions. This is more of a meeting of our board with our administration and leadership team to learn and kind of figure out what we may need to make decisions on in the future, that sort of thing. But I want to make kind of a hard stop right at 7:30. At 6:30, if you guys would like to have your papers signed by Emily, Jen, Dave, then we'll allow you guys to leave at 6:30. How about that?
Or Ralph.
Or Mr. Schloss is back there. So we won't make you guys stay till 7:30, so at 6:30, we'll let you get up and leave. What do we got first here tonight? DPI School Accountability Report Card.
Tonight I will be sharing with you the results of our district and school accountability report cards that's issued from the Department of Public Instruction. What I'll do tonight is give a little bit of an overview of what's all included in the report card, just because I know for some people it's new, some people at home it might be newer too. There are some new things this year that I'll share with you as well. And then also I'll share the overall district report and our results with that, and then I'll get into the individual school results. One of the things that I included in your packet tonight is a document called "The School Report at a Glance." I'm just going to use this to highlight really all of the areas of the report card. The first, at the very top, the report card we'll be talking about tonight is the one that is released for public to view. Along the way in the process, I do get a secure report card that I'm able to look at and just validate the data and make sure that everything's accurate. But what we'll be talking about tonight is the one that is released for public. On the left-hand side is the overall score as well as the overall ratings, and you can see how they break down there. This is similar to years in the past, but I just want to point it out just as a reference as we talk about each one of these with our results. I'll also have this information on other results slides, so you can see it right there. On the lower-left side is the school information. This is going to be different for every district or school. This here that we're looking at is a sample. On the right-hand side, on the upper part, is the priority areas. These priority areas are the same in years past, and they include the student achievement, school growth, or district growth, the closing the gaps, on-track and post-secondary readiness. Like last year, we have the priority weight areas, and so for each priority area, it's given a certain amount of weight in our overall score. This is something that changes year to year and is different from district to school. Knowing this information ahead of time and when we're looking at the results helps us to understand how much student achievement was factored in, maybe more or less than student growth. In previous years, we didn't always have that information, so that's a nice piece to have. We also have the Student Engagement Indicators. This is an area where there could be a deduction. We don't have a deduction this year, and that hasn't been an issue for us, but that is also one part. And then on the bottom part is the test participation. Share with us from DPI as well as the CISA's that we work with, the purpose of the Accountability Report Card is really to identify strengths in our system and schools and to build upon that, as well as pinpoint areas of needing improvement, and so we've had some conversations around those areas. New this year is the ACT Aspire Assessment Data that is included. So the Aspire data is, the ACT Aspire Assessment is a test that's administered to the ninth and 10th graders at the high school level. The results from last year and previous years are used coming on this report card in the area of student achievement as well as student growth. In the previous years, the ACT Aspire data was not used. It was just solely ACT, and the high school did not have a growth measurement. For our district, our overall results, we are with a, we have a 72.3 overall score. We fell in the area of meets expectation. Again, on the right is the ratings. Since the report cards have come out, there's been a lot of press around that, and so I just wanted to highlight just a few interesting things. Out of 96% of the public schools in Wisconsin received a rating of meets or exceeds expectation. And when we look at, when you look at our results, you know, we're within that range, and I wanted to point out that we are just .7 away from the next highest rating, which is exceeds expectation. What I'll do now is talk about the overall scores for the priority areas, and then we'll go a little bit more into detail. So much like the sample that I just talked about with each of the priority areas, here is our actual results with our student achievement with a score of 71.1 out of 100. District growth having a score of 61.3. Closing the gaps, 74.4. On-track and post-secondary readiness, and then also our student engagement indicators. Over on the left, you can see our actual percentage weights. Those will again be different from district to district, as well as school to school within a system. When we look at the student achievement data, this priority area we've had, since we've had the report cards, our score is a 71.7. Our English Language Arts Achievement has a score of 34.6 out of 50, and math is 36.50. You can see that our overall score of 71.7 is higher than the state score that's over on the right of a 62.3. One thing I want to point out is that each of these priority areas, they use different data. And so I have it on my notes, but I just want to be sure that I share with you that this area, it factors in three years of assessment data, so it goes back to 2016-17, and we're looking at the Wisconsin Forward Assessment, the ACT Writing Assessment, the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment, which is an alternative assessment for students who don't take the Forward or ACT. And then this year, they also factored in the ACT Aspire Assessment into the student achievement areas. You can see that this is a relative strength for our district as we are performing above the state. Within there, the area of English Language Arts is something that we'll talk a little bit more about as I share in more slides. So district growth is the next area. District growth has student data factored in that goes all the way back to 2015-16, so more years than student achievement and a slightly different set of assessment data. So for this one, we're looking at the Wisconsin Forward Exam, as well as the ACT Aspire new this year, and then the ACT. The Dynamic Learning Map Assessment, which is the alternative assessment to ACT and Forward, is not factored into this area.
Do they weigh all three of those tests exactly the same, so they each counted at 33%, or how does that work?
For each of those, they're looking at the proficiency levels and looking at, so on Dynamic Learning Maps, you can still get advanced or proficient, and so it's those same categories that are used to determine how many students are at each area, as well as what percentage of the population is at below basic, basic, advanced, or proficient. So it's the same ratings that is used.
Okay, but with the test that's new this year, and if we're looking at several years of data, how is that?
Let me clarify.
Okay.
The ACT Aspire is not new this year. It's new that it's factored into the report card this year. Previous years, it wasn't.
Right, but I'm asking if this is a growth measurement, you wouldn't have a growth number from prior years. So how are they weighting that number then this year in this score?
We are going back for the years. Just because it's the first year that ACT Aspire data is factored into the report card, it's taking last year's data-
Oh, okay.
And the year before.
Okay.
And the year before.
Thank you.
And keep going.
Okay.
But growth is very tricky, and that's one thing I want to point out here. When I get a-
Sorry. For clarification on what you just said, so are you saying that they adjusted the previous years to include the way the current formula is with the past?
No, past report cards are done. You know, those factors, if you look on a high school report card from last year, they won't have a growth score. And so this year, they will have a growth score, so we didn't, nothing was done, like going back and revising it. It's just this year that it's added.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks.
The growth is the area that I get a lot of questions on, because people want to say, okay, if I'm at A and I move to B, is that enough growth? And really, it's more complicated than that. It's beyond my level as well. But I do want to share this graphic that was shared with us, and it really helps to describe how growth is looked at. And in this graphic, you'll see that the red dots on the left-hand side, this is hypothetically where a student or a group of students is starting on a third-grade reading test or a pre-test. And then looking at the number of years that we have student data, we have a prediction, which is that white circle where we believe the students will grow ultimately from third to fourth in this example. And with our district growth, the way that it's calculated, we're looking for value-add. That value-add comes in when we have students who not only meet where we predict that they will achieve in their post-test, but go beyond that to that next higher red bubble. And that would be the value-add growth. I'm not sure if everyone's going to just go to sleep, or you're like, yep, it's more-
I'm trying to understand that. It's very different.
It is, and that's why I think this is a good, simple graphic, but it is, you know, we want, we predict the kids will end up in that white circle, yet we want them and we give more points or credit for going beyond that predicted part, which is that value-add.
So where does the formula come from that predicts the white circle? Who's in charge of that?
That would be DPI. And then also with the value-add calculations, in the past, we had just a value-add report that was based on that same type of calculation, but now it's merged into here. So it's not, it's nothing new for education. It's just highlighted.
Is that formula something that they tweak from year to year? And how much transparency do you have into that formula in advance?
Well, we don't-
If any.
I think the formula is much more complicated. We do have some estimates as far as where we can like estimate where we are going to fall within that, but nothing is ever like solid.
When do they publish the testing process? Is that the, the morning?
I think, I think it's, I think it's in fall, well, actually, when the result, right before the results come. So if there is any tweaking. I know this year with the Aspire data, this is kind of off-topic, not on our results, but with the Aspire data, some of the districts saw a really big swing in growth. And so for those districts, they are kind of exempt from growth this year because it was such a big swing one way or the other. So I know that in our recent The ACT Digest, which is our district assessment coordinator like messaging from our CISA and DPI, they are looking for volunteers to look at the state report card in the future. So I'm not sure where that puts us with that, but that is just some other things going on around the edges.
See, and the growth component, I believe, is not just DPI in Wisconsin. That comes from the U.S. Department of Education, and all 50 states have to have some type of growth component when they're reporting out. And so it's not necessarily identical from one state to the next, but that's a U.S. Department of Education requirement to have that growth component, and it all, every one of them has to meet certain criteria. Wisconsin might be a little bit different than Illinois or Indiana, but for the most part, they have to have the same basic parts for that growth component.
The next areas are closing the gaps and on-track and post-secondary readiness, two areas that are similar to what we've had in the past, and there have been no changes in these areas, like we didn't have in growth with additional assessments considered. So for these areas, our closing the gaps was close to what the state performed at, and we had a 67.4. And our on-track and post-secondary readiness with an 88.3, that one was higher than the state at an 84%. Here, they factor in the graduation rate, attendance rate, the third-grade English Language Arts, as well as the eighth-grade math. I can say like we have these, all the data that's used here, we've been looking at our student results, you know, like in summer when we get them. One of the things we have set up is Don, Laura, and I to meet, just coming up, looking again, like going a little bit deeper into the student data and looking at those bigger themes.
Can I ask a question? Well, this is the very, very last number on the report, which is the state average, it's eighth-grade math, 5.7 out of 10. Can you put that into perspective? Because a layperson like myself, when you look at that, that looks like someone scored a 57%. Is that what that means for the state average? What does, what does that mean?
No, it's looking at the overall state. So when you look at, for all the report cards, if you look at a school, a district, and the state, every time they look at the population of students, it's factored like it's one school. And so that number really represents the student, the eighth-grade math performance, but it's also calculated with the other one, so they're only allowing it 10 points. And I can look just real quick with the- I have a, there's a, what? And that's why I always bring my things up. I don't have it right at the ready, but on the data, the glance sheet, there's a docu, there's a, just like the report card at a glance, there's a data at a glance that I linked in, and it highlights that specific part. I just don't have my fingertips or my hands right on it right now, but I can get it.
That's fine. We can talk about it later. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I have the question that I have to ask every year, because this is just the burning thing for me. So I understand this is based all on tests. Are we ever going to get to a point where we look at student achievement beyond the ACT or the Aspire or whatever? This is always irritating to me. We have students who probably are 3.8, 4.0 students who necessarily aren't great test takers, and so, you know, they feel bad after the test, and even though they're some of our probably highest graduating students and doing remarkable things, but yet, yeah, kind of stunk it up on the test. So, you know, is DPI ever going to, or is there a way, when you're talking, or maybe volunteering yourself to be on a committee, that, you know, we can get to that point? I mean, I realize it's slightly subjective, because, you know, West Bend, an A for Advanced Algebra is going to be maybe different than an A in Slinger, but I mean, there's got to be some point of like our students are, their grades are X, Y, and Z versus what they do on the test. I mean, the test is like a snapshot, one day. You know, bam, I had a headache, I didn't feel good, I stunk. You know, but yet I was here in school for how many months, doing great, and had an A+ in that class. So it just, it doesn't really seem fair to me that we're graded on that, and it's such a strong grade, right? And the whole world has to read it, and everyone's like, oh, my God, you got a 62, or whatever it is, as opposed to like, but hey, we're churning out like great, amazing students who are graduating at these phenomenal rates and going on to be amazing people, but yet, yeah, we didn't significantly exceed on our, on our report card.
And Nancy, you're absolutely right, and that's our job to make sure that we let everybody know that the state test is one piece of the puzzle, that we have a lot of other things that we need to address on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to show that it's not just this test. At the same time, we're not happy with some of our scores. And whether it's one piece one day or not, we think we should be a little higher in some areas, and so we're going to work on those. But whether we go up three points or five points, Jen pointed out, we're at 72.3. If we were at 73, we would have been exceeds. Well, if we would have been at 73, we would have been a whisker above it exceeds, and only a tenth of a point would have dropped us down below. And so we've got to put everything in perspective, and we know, at a leadership team meeting a couple of days ago, we talked about all the great things we do, and we need to continue to talk about those things as part of our success. But this is the box score in the football game. This is what makes the press, and as much as we like or don't like, we have to recognize the fact that this is out there, and we need to address this as well as highlight those other things. But you're absolutely right in that there are so many things other than the test that determines what our school is all about.
I would agree. I haven't been a part of those conversations, but maybe there's more to come. I have a meeting with our CISA agency that works with DPI every month. We have one coming up, actually, I think it might be next Tuesday. And so that's where we get together and, you know, talk about these things and find out what's coming and that sort of thing. They are always open to feedback, but other things like student engagement and that sort of thing is hard to measure, and then thinking of it across the system and across the state.
It would just seem as if they're giving a score for graduation rate, and they're giving a score for attendance. There could be some kind of score for, some kind of consideration given for, I don't know, GPA or something, you know? I don't know. That's your area, not mine, but I would just feel like, it just feels to me like there's, as Don said, there's so much more, and, you know, here we're just looking at a very small snapshot of what our students do. And, you know, there are just some students that we all know just really struggle with taking a test like this, or there are some students who don't care and don't really care, but they're still getting decent grades, so, they don't care about the test and not about their grades, but, you know, so.
Well, and I, I mean, I agree with Don. We just have to keep it in perspective. You know, this is, we look for trends, you know, in our student results, because if, let's say, third grade's overall going down, we want to know that, and we want to respond to that. So we're looking more for the trends rather than those little things here and there, but, I mean, I do agree, we have to keep it in perspective. One thing that we talked about with all the district assessment coordinators is the amount of, just that people knew that the Aspire, the ACT Aspire Assessment was going to be added, but if you think back four years ago, it wasn't, and so maybe people would have done things differently, you know? So we've had a lot of conversation about that. So obviously, what's done is done, but it is keeping it all in perspective, and this is just, this is one point. I also go back to our district continuous improvement plan, and that's where we're trying to, you know, have other points besides the student assessment. We want kids engaged. We want a safe place for everyone to learn and that sort of thing. So I hear your comments. I will share them at that committee that I'm volunteering for.
Thank you.
Here are our school results. So Decorah, Fair Park, and Green Tree, all within the exceeds expectation range. And again, over on the right is that rating scale. Jackson McLean significantly exceeding. Silverbrook and Badger exceeds. Pathways meets few, and East and West with meets expectations.
What would our score be if Pathways was excluded?
I can't really give an answer for that, but I can explain a little bit more of how that impacts us as a district. So like I said, each school, district, and then the state, when the student data is factored, it's as if it's one big school. So for our district overall score, it's not a combination of adding these numbers and getting the average or something like that. We actually take all the students. And so what you're seeing here is that a small population of students at Pathways is about 52 kids, I think, that were at Pathways for the full year. Their performance was low, and over time, it was low, and so as a school, it's not, you know, very well. But when you factor those 52 students into our large population, they're still factored into our district results. And so that small amount, it's a big number for one school, but it's a small amount for kids with our overall number of, you know, kids that we have in the district. So the district overall score would be this, is the same. The student data is already factored in, so.
Students are in our district, no matter which school they're at.
Right. So if you took-
Some of them are just very bright and aren't necessarily good single-day test takers.
Yeah, so if we were to take Pathways' score off of it, our, our scores would be the same, because they, all those students are our students as a district.
Is it pretty typical with other districts that, I mean, I'm looking at this, and it tends to go down as the kids get older? Is that pretty typical in other districts? So like the grade schools performed in general better than the high schools?
I haven't looked at report cards, but with student assessment, yes, that is typical, that student performance goes down as students get older. And some of it is the rigor, some of it is the choice, you know, for students, and, you know, even my nephew, he was told to take the higher-level math. Eh, his friends weren't in there, you know, so.
You, when do you start the process of working with the principals as it relates to these scores and the improvement plans and so forth?
It's really ongoing, and so from here, so let's just start from here, okay? So from here, Don and Laura and I are going to meet, look at this information, and then we're going to start to develop some ideas for the next district plan. And then what happens, I already share this information with schools and principals and kind of walk through them, you know, with the results, but right now, the school year starts, so it's kind of hard to react. But all the student data we've looked at, and so what will happen is we'll start to develop the next district continuous improvement plan, and then what happens is as the year goes on, the principals are coming back to leadership team meeting, they're looking at the action steps that they've already laid out and saying, am I going to meet my goals? What do I need to adjust? And then over at the end of the school year, all the principals, they come together, and we really look at, did we meet our goals or not? And we do that as a district, as well as schools. And so while we've started to think about our next one, we're still working on right now. So it's really overlapping, much like the budget years and calendars. So in August, we close out as much as we can of this current year. In July, we get a lot of the state assessment data in, and so that's when I have like drop-in sessions for principals to come and look at the data. They have access to it, but I can sit with them more one-on-one. And then in August, before the teachers come back, I share with principals at a leadership team meeting, like an outline or some highlights and revisions, and we talk as a group about what are we going to do, what are some strategic actions that we're going to do with curriculum and professional development, what is a school going to do? And then we take that month of August to really develop those action steps while into August and September really, and define what we're going to do and how we're going to address, you know, and meet our goals. So it's really a year-long process, and then we start the next year, even when, even right now. So it kind of overlaps.
So Jen, just to play that back then, so the improvement plan we're working on now, this school year, is based on last year's, the report card that came out 12 months ago?
It's based on, yes, the report card, but the student data that, we get that back in July and August. And so all the data that's used here, that three years of data or five years, we've already been working on that.
On this data in this current report card?
Mm-hmm. It's just the actual rating that we didn't have, like that final number, so.
So the, the story behind this data has been factored into the plan that they're working on this year now?
Yes, the school improvement plans, and so that's really where we take, we can't share the data with you in July and August. You know, I typically don't share that with you until, I think it's November, earlier in November, just our student results. But we're looking at that and looking for themes and that sort of thing. So the data that's used here has been used to develop our current district plans as well as our school improvement plans.
So one of the things where we meet next week, and we look at fourth grade going into fifth, and the fourth graders, maybe they all have a, we average 72 in English Language Arts in fourth, and it's 65 in fifth, and I don't know what the numbers are, but if it's a drop and it's that way every year, is it, what we need to really find out, are the expectations significantly different than fifth than they are in fourth? Is it a whole different type of test which would make sense that sometimes your results? Or is it we're changing from a very controlled elementary environment to more of an intermediate school environment, and maybe we're not doing as much drill and practice as we need to do? And those are things that when Laura, Jen, and I meet next week, that's what we're really taking a look at, is when they transition from one grade to the next, one building to the next, and there's a drop-off, and there oftentimes is, what's causing that drop-off? Is it kids are getting older and making choices that maybe aren't as good as they would like it to be? Or is it based on, on maybe our teaching strategy has changed from one building to the next, and we need to revisit that so we can improve some of those scores when they
My last slide that I have to share is really celebrations and talking points. The talking points we've really talked about is the use of the school improvement plans and the district improvement plan, and just how it's an ongoing cycle. We really start- Um, we really start at work in summer throughout the school year, but some of our celebrations are five out of five elementary schools received a rating of exceeds or significantly exceeds. Um, you can look at our, three out of our four schools that served our seven to 12 students had increased in their overall score. Six out of 10 schools had increased in their, um, in the area of student achievement. Um, when we look at the ELA, that's something we're going to continue to look at and prioritize our work in that area. But when you look at achievement and growth, we, while there are some areas in the report card results that we were lower than we'd like to be, we do have some bright spots throughout our system. And not just measured on the, you know, accountability report, but in other things that we see. But Fair Park had some great results with a student growth score of 81. Jackson had a closing the gap score of 97. And McLean had a student achievement score of 95. Um, so along all the report cards, there are some great things to celebrate. And we, I've talked with all the principals about that at our leadership team meeting of, you know, let's talk about these results, what they mean, but what's going well and what can we improve on. And always if there's any more conversation or questions, we can have that. And I'm always happy to sit down and have a conversation because it is very complex. And, you know, I like to have all the reports with me, you know, just to, so I can have the numbers and data right there with, with me. Are there any questions that you have or further discussion?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move along to our four key program update.
All right. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I just want to say that I'm very thankful that I am not talking about value-added. Nice job, Jen. I'm Emily Melstrand. I'm the principal of early learning. And I am actually here today to talk about the fact that we are coming to the end of our three-year inter-agency agreement with our partner agencies. I, I feel like I was just up here, um, I think it was late spring, talking a lot about the really unique things we're doing at the early learning level. And although I'm going to highlight some of those things for you tonight, my goal is really to make sure that, um, you're prepared to act on the contract, uh, hoping to extend that for an additional three years. So as you know, we use a community-based model to support our four-year-old kindergarten program. And we're actually pretty much 100% community-based, which means that all of our kiddos are serviced out in community sites, whom we have inter-agency agreements with, kind of detailing the way we're going to work together to provide those services. We do have some students who are a part of our Washington County Head Start. Um, so those kiddos, about 40 of them are educated at the Ralph's Education Center, um, but the rest of our students are out in those community agencies. So we are wrapping up our three-year cycle. We had an inter-agency agreement in place spanning 2017 through 2020. And if you remember, we actually had five community agencies that we were partnering with. We currently have four. We did an addendum about halfway through because one of our partner sites, Starlight Learning Center, was actually purchased by the YMCA. So the YMCA assumed the responsibility of providing the community-based four-year-old kindergarten at that site. So our, our four community agencies currently are the Kettle Marine YMCA, Jackson Park and Recreation Department, Living Word Child Development Center, and then Montessori Children's House. So I, I wanted to give you a little bit of information just about the individual sites. The Kettle Marine YMCA is our largest partner. And we actually have four different locations in which we're providing services in conjunction with the YMCA. We have five sections of 4K available at the West Washington location, so we're able to house up to 100 students at that site. And that's actually the one, the location where we have what we call our Integrated Head Start Program, which is phenomenal. We've been able to integrate 20 of our kiddos who are eligible for our Head Start Program into our traditional YMCA 4K. And then those kiddos actually stay for an extended day and they're able to participate in some enrichment activities that the Y has been, um, working with us to create. We have two sections at the YMCA at our Saviors. We have two at the YMCA Trinity Lutheran, which previously was the Starlight Learning Center location. And then we actually expanded at the YMCA Holy Trinity, which is in conjunction. It's kind of a triangular partnership with River Edge Nature Center. Um, and we expanded that this year because we had so many requests for enrollment at that site. So we're able to, um, service 80 students now at that location. And then I did want to mention that the Y has expanded their partnership with us this year beyond just 4K, working with us to provide some options for our three and four-year-olds who have disabilities and are not 4K eligible. Um, we have certainly learned through our 4K program, uh, as we've included all of our preschool-aged kiddos with disabilities into their regular classrooms, that the growth that they're making is tremendous. And we're really looking to expand that so that our little three-year-olds who qualify for IEPs have the opportunity to be educated with their regular peers. And the Y this year, um, created an addendum or an additional partnership focusing on a play school program. So right now at the Ralph's Education Center, anyone in the community who is three or four can sign up for a play school program, which is a YMCA enrichment activity. And it's co-taught by our Early Childhood Special Education Team and then folks from the YMCA Rec Department Program. And, um, those kiddos are all educated together. And that's been really awesome and one of the benefits of this partnership. Jackson Park and Rec is one of our other partners and one of our larger partners. We currently have two sections of 4K there. And then likewise, um, very similar to the model I just described with the YMCA Play School, we have an integrated taught-time program there. So because of the 4K partnership, we were able to sit down and talk about, well, what can we do together to serve three-year-olds? And, uh, created this taught-time program last year where again, we're co-teaching with their rec department folks. And we're actually able to integrate anywhere between six and 12 students with disabilities into a typical preschool environment. And we did, last year was our pilot year and it was phenomenal. And then this year we also expanded to house one section of a half-day Head Start Program at the Jackson Community Center. And I just have to tell a really quick little story because I just found out that they did this. And this really kind of is a testament to the strengths of these partnerships. So the Jackson Community Center had their Goul Gala for Halloween. And prior to that community event, they invite all of our 4K kiddos in for kind of like this little mini parent outreach activity. And without being asked, um, the Jackson Community Center, um, team, sent out individual invitations to every one of our Head Start families who attend there. And with the invitation to attend, also set, sent the family free tickets so that they could participate in all the games and food tickets. And I just thought that that was a really, yeah, just a really wonderful testament to the strength of those partnerships and these folks' desire to really make all of our kids and families a part of their community. Living Word Child Development Center, we currently have two sections of 4K, but we actually have space on that site to expand if our enrollment in the Jackson area increases. So we have the potential to serve up to 80 students at that site. And then likewise, at Montessori Children's House, we're currently serving two sections, but we have space on site to expand if enrollment in the West Bend area increases. So we kind of have a contingency plan in the event that our enrollment exceeds where we're at currently. I wanted to give you a little bit of information just so you could see our enrollment trends over the past four years. This is our fourth year of 4K. And you can see that we've been pretty steady. Um, and then I also looked at the data of the number of students we're enrolling in kindergarten and just compared approximately what percentage of kiddos in our system, um, are attending 4K and then moving on to 5K. And you can see in, in the second year, we were at 86% and we're really at about 98% of our students. So I just wanted to, once again, and I kind of did this as I was talking, but I wanted to just reinforce really the strength of this community-based model. And I've said this multiple times as I've presented, um, but when we started this venture five years ago, I could not understand the complexity of this idea of community-based. And I thought we were just a little bit crazy for considering it. And I have to tell you, um, again and again, the impact of working with our community partners is just more and more evident to me. And so many things that we're able to do together that we really wouldn't be able to do, um, in isolation of one another. And I think one of the really amazing things, in addition to the fact that we're sharing resources and we're doing these really awesome things for families through outreach, there's really nice consistency for children between childcare and 4K. It, it means a lot to the parent of a preschool-aged child when you can drop them off in the morning at childcare and they can walk down the hallway and go to 4K. We've had some really unique opportunities to create some integrated special education programming for three and 4K-eligible kiddos. Um, we've had the opportunity to work with childcare providers. So when we have little kiddos who have needs that exceed what is typically supported in a childcare setting, we're able to work together between our special education team and our childcare and really try to address those needs and support students. All right. So what makes us unique? All of the things that I talked about. But I also want to really emphasize the fact that we're working really hard as an early learning team to get kids ready for kindergarten socially, emotionally, and academically, but doing it in a way that's really developmentally appropriate. So in our professional development, we consistently talk about developmentally appropriate practices that are play-based, that honor nature-based learning and outdoor learning time. And we're doing that because four-year-olds should love school. Um, and, and the practices that we use to support them should be developmentally appropriate and engaging. And that's really one of our core missions. We also work intently on making sure that all children are educated in their regular environment. And I think that's one of the things we've been most proud of. So a couple of quick pictures. There's some of our kiddos out in the nature-based sites. These are a couple of pictures from the enrichment activities that our Head Start kiddos are able to do at the Y. And I think I told you in the spring, the Y provides all of our Head Start kids with, um, a sports class, swimming lessons, which that is something to take 24-year-olds swimming, but it's been pretty amazing. And then a science and cooking class. And the other thing that they do for their families is, is they provide every one of the Head Start families a free membership to the Y for the year. And then this is just a picture of our play school class from across the street. It's a YMCA community-based program that supports three-year-olds with disabilities. So I did want to mention, um, a proposed change in statute. And right now this is really just a proposal, but I want you to be aware of this because it's being discussed at the state level. Um, there's two Senate bills being proposed currently. One of them affects the age at which a child can attend 4K. And one of them potentially allows districts the opportunity to expand from a half-day program to a full-day program and then count 4K pupil as a, a full FTE or a 1.0 FTE. Um, the first bill really is looking at expanding the, the age requirement so that children can enroll in 4K if they are four years old before December 31st, as opposed to the current law, which states that they have to be four on or before September 1st. And then they're actually also looking at the possibility that children could enroll in January of their four-year-old year if they turn four before June 30th, if that makes sense. And currently it, the way that the Senate bill is written or being proposed, um, is that school boards will have until '25, '26 to implement those changes. So I want you to know that those are out there. They're being talked about. We're monitoring them. We have not put a formal action plan in place because at this point neither of those have been approved. So just to kind of wrap up my presentation, um, we are proposing the following recommendations in terms of our inter-agency agreement. We're recommending that we maintain our current partners. Um, we have very rich, deep connections with our partners and have been able to, in conjunction with them, put together and maintain a really outstanding early learning program. And we continue to grow and, and change the things that we're doing to meet the needs of our students. Um, you will notice in your board packet that there were two contracts for you to review. They're very, very similar in language. The difference, the primary difference is that the YMCA, the Kettle Marine YMCA contract is differentiated to include a required nature-based instructional piece. So that, that kind of, um, details the expectation of that triangular partnership with River Edge and the intent of those children being outside and engaged in that type of learning. We're recommending a three-year contract from 2020 to 2023. And really, um, I worked with our 4K director team and our upper leadership here, um, in the school district. And together we had minimal changes to the contract language. Um, we made some adjustments to the insurance requirements and then we updated the term. But that was really the only proposed changes from the original contract.
Are we bringing those contracts at our next board meeting?
Correct. I think December 9th or December 6th. Yep. And that's it. Do you have any questions or comments, discussion for me?
Two quick ones. One is, um, what is the inflationary part for salaries in the contracts as we go forward? Is there a provision? Well, what is that provision?
Yep. There is language in there. Um, and we have been able to offer incremental increases, um, two of the three years of the contract. The way that we have it in there in the language, it really is contingent upon the district's reinc- re- reimbursement. And if the district is reimbursed at a greater rate, we're able to pass that along to our, our partners.
So one other comment, that's more of a comment than a question. As we look at our enrollment and decline enrollment, it's all the different things. There, you know, Emily and I talked on the way back from, from River's Edge. What would happen if we moved the program to our facilities rather than somebody else's? Okay, is that an option? Is it a win-win option? And it's not. It truly is. Right now, it's a win-win-win. It's a win for the parents because they truly like the opportunity to have one spot for both daycare and for the provider. It's a win for the provider because they have an opportunity to enhance their, their financial wellbeing because they're doing programs that they wouldn't necessarily do. But more than that, it's a win for us because if we took over the programs, they're going to cost quite a bit more than what we're doing right now because of how they become on our teacher salary contracts, the, our benefits, all the things that go with it. And, and so as we talk in a little bit about our facilities, I have 4K included. And I'll just tell you right now that having researched based on HR and salaries and, and visiting with Emily, we would not, we'd actually lose money rather than save money by taking it out of our community providers and putting it into schools, even if we have the space in some of those schools to do that.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you know the answers, but when you're looking at these Senate bills, 407 and 408, do you know how strong they are? Are they going to get legs? Do you think they're going to get a hearing? How far are we in the process?
We're, we're, they're pretty preliminary at this point. I can tell you that the moving for, giving districts the opportunity to move to a 1.0 FTE or a full-day program, that conversation has been happening longer. Um, I can't predict what's going to happen with that, but at the state level, that's been a conversation for at least the last 18 months pretty strongly. The second Senate bill, that was actually brand-new news to me when, when we received that update. So we're going to continue to monitor it. But I, I don't, other than that, I don't know where they're at in the process.
And I realize you probably don't have an action plan, but I'm assuming you might. I mean, how, how great of an increase would that be in our enrollment if they allowed these different age or different months to count for the 4K? Do you have any ideas?
Well, gosh, off the top of my head, I mean, I, I don't know that I can give you a number, but the way that I really thought about it is ultimately we would be enrolling kiddos, I mean, who are three and a half at the beginning of the year and mid-year. So you're almost gaining a full grade level. And that's something we'd have to think about in an action plan. Number one, philosophically, um, how do we feel about that? But number two, we'd really have to be strategic about thinking about like a transitional program. Because I, I would suspect. Because I would suspect it could be challenging to bring a three-and-a-half-year-old into a 4K classroom already established in January. So I think we'd really have to think about that.
Along with that, the, just that, to go to full-time, full-year, then it would just double. I mean, so right now, we have about 157, 160 kids. You know, we have two numbers. One is the one with kids in seats, and the other one is for state aid purposes. For state aid purposes, we have to use the formula for 4K, and now they would be the same as everybody else. Okay? You know, the other part of the program would be if they start at January, then our kindergarten, unless they change kindergarten start dates, now they're going to have a year and a half or two years of 4K because they wouldn't be eligible to start kindergarten at the end of 4K because they're not age-eligible. And so there's some real challenges with that. And not that it's a bad program. I don't know, two years of 4K, if that's, you know, they really have to think it through because unless they change the other component, part of it, there's a lot of things that are moving parts with that proposal.
Absolutely. And even with the full-day option, I know, you know, at the state level, they're really trying to be thoughtful also about how that affects districts' ability to use a community-based program. And I know that the Childcare Association in Wisconsin is very involved in that conversation because if you think about the infrastructure of your childcare in a community, they really depend upon three and four-year-olds in childcare in order to stay afloat. So that's another consideration that's kind of being filtered into this. And would there be incentives or things to encourage districts to remain community-based? So lots of questions about that in the future if those are passed. Any other questions related to the contract or any of the other information that I presented? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. 2020, 2021 High School Course Planning Guide.
Good evening. You will be asked in December, at the December 8th board meeting, to approve the Course Planning Guide, which is not something you've been asked to do in the recent years at all. And I wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about why you're going to be asked to do that. So our Course Planning Guide has looked like this in the past. It's pretty much been the same look in general for the last several years. We've kept it online and had it available to students and parents online. So with our registration process this year, we have spent some time revising the Course Planning Guide. Teachers at the high schools were asked in September, and they had a little over a month to complete the task, to look at their department as a whole and then to look at each of the individual courses within their department in order to revise the description of the course, to make sure that it's up to date and really reflects what's being taught. In addition, as they were doing that, there were some revisions to course names. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that tonight. Part of the reason that it's necessary to come forward to the board for approval is, again, these are all part of our course planning documents. And so if we're going to make a change to the course planning documents, that requires your approval. So, or, I'm sorry, the course overview documents, excuse me. So the changes aren't major in most areas. There are some name changes in the area in AP classes, really to be in line with what the college board labels the courses as. Our world language courses were simply called AP Spanish 5, AP German 5, and AP French 5. The college board calls those AP or Advanced Placement, French Language and Culture, and German Language and Culture, Spanish Language and Culture. So we'll be changing the names to be in alignment with the college board. Physics, we have, what, the AP Physics that we teach is really AP Physics C Mechanics. So we are calling that what it actually is. Along with AP Two-Dimensional Art and Design, Three-Dimensional Art and Design, and AP Drawing will reflect the, we're dropping the word "studio" from those names as that's not in alignment with the college board. We are also slightly changing the names of some of our transcribed credit courses in order to be aligned with the Technical College. But there are some differences in our Technical College courses. We have, we will be offering a new course called Introduction to Operating Systems. This course is, has not been offered before, but in order to be able to take some of our more advanced classes that we have offered in the past, the Technical College is now requiring the Introduction to Operating Systems as a prerequisite to some of our more advanced Technical College courses. So in order to make that pathway accessible to our students, we're going to add this course to our course offerings. That will be part of the board packet next meeting in December so that you can review that. Additionally, we had transcribed credit hardware slash software and that, support, excuse me, that is separated into two classes aligned with the Technical College, TC Hardware Support and TC Software Support. It separates those two out, and the students then are completing one Technical College course per semester rather than trying to complete both of those in one semester at the high school. Again, along with this, our Course Planning Guide will be printed for our incoming freshman parents. We will have copies in all of the school offices then for people to access, and it will be online and distributed to families electronically at the high schools. Those who would like a hard copy will have that accessible to them as well. Are there any questions about the Course Planning Guide, the potential new courses that we'll be coming forward to next time, and then the minor changes?
Is a lot of it in reaction to what the state asks for? You mentioned the college boards. Is it mostly in reaction to those agencies or is...
The title changes?
The title changes, but also, I guess I'm just wondering how much of it is in response to...
It's really about having our practice, yes. Being transparent to parents, when the, giving the students and the parents the time and the opportunity to really look through the Course Planning Guide. It's designed to help them now really think about pathways that they may want to pursue. So the departments have all listed careers that their courses are linked up to, and so you can see what taking classes in this area might open up for you. We also, each department has included their department mission so that, again, students can see why you might be taking classes in that other than they're required in some The other, it really, the Course Planning Guide also really defines our opportunities at the high schools. And for families who are looking, who are moving into the area, it's one of the things that families will go to, to see what is the high school about? And what opportunities will my student have if they attend that high school? So it really needs to be representative of all of the opportunities that exist and the quality of those opportunities.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Oh, I was going to say, government students, before you leave, you might want to stay and get a sneak preview of the library. That's the next, and you can go back to the classes tomorrow and say, "We saw the library before anybody did." So totally up to you. You can leave now, but you might want to stay just to see what it's going to be all about.
They don't look as thrilled, do they? They're like, whatever.
All right. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Kirkergard set me up for this big aha moment here, so I feel like I got to skip to the end, the presentation first, so they can get out of here tonight. So in June, we were up in front of you, myself, Dave, Kim Christiansen, our library media coordinator, talking about the state of our libraries at the high school. And as you know, we had some work that we needed to do to bring that up to what we would call 21st century design for our libraries at the high school. And we started looking at the space what was West Library. And since that point, what we've been doing is kind of completing a study of our library program, the space at the high school, looking at other places. We've visited three different schools, three different high schools that have renovated or built their libraries over the years. We've looked at different 21st century design ideas and what constitutes a new library design today. We've had discussions around the consolidation down to one library. What would that look like for the high school? As we look at those different spaces up there, this year, just as a reminder, we are currently running both library operations out of one library in East at this point while we're starting the demolition of the West Library and so forth during this school year. And we've worked with an architect to come up with a conceptual plan, and you'll see that conceptual plan tonight, to see if we even had the space to be considered a one-consolidated library at the high school. As part of the study phase, we also have done a great job, and Kim and her staff have done a great job reviewing our collection, going from two libraries down to one and trying to make it all fit, and really going through and looking at what a relevant collection is today for our students to access those materials, knowing that there are some more things that are online. So that collection is almost to the point where it's all over at East at this point and combined and adjusted an inventory. And then we took a look at our statistics. And to give you an idea, these are numbers from the '18-'19 school years. On average, we see 550 student visits a day into our libraries at the high school. We have over 530 classes visit the library during the school year, and we have approximately 15,800 resources that are circulated throughout a school year up at our high school between all of our students. So the conversation, as we look at a consolidated library, what would that bring to the high schools? Number one, it would be an updated physical space that creates an open inviting space to collaborate, research, create, and study. That learning hub. There's a lot of names that are out there thrown around with what a library is or what it should be called today. Call it what you want. It's a place that you want the kids to go to be able to have access to resources, both print, digital, the technological resources, and an environment that's inviting, where students can come in and work together, work individually, and be able to learn and collaborate. It's a space that has multiple areas of furniture that allows our staff and students to work in all those different environments. Currently, if you walk into our library, we have a couple of different types of furniture, be it older, but we do have a little bit of that. But as you can see through the conceptual space, there's a lot of opportunities for whole group instruction and classes to come into the library, all the way working down to that individual quiet space for our students. A consolidated library and a reworked library would allow for multiple classes to visit the library at one time. Currently, the way our current libraries are set up, it's really hard to have multiple classes in there and break them apart and still have access for kids that are coming from study halls and different places at that point. And it gives them access to those relevant and updated print, digital, and technological resources that we talked about. It talks about bringing in additional technology resources that we don't have the space for currently, nor can we support. So things such as a makerspace where kids would have access to 3D printers, laser engravers, video and audio equipment, things that they can utilize in all of their classes so that they can produce projects and materials to show their evidence of learning throughout a wide variety of different classes, not just if they were in taking tech ed. So before I moved over to district office, I taught video production. If our students wanted to work in front of a green screen, they had to be in my class or try to work their way into the room when the studio was available at this point. As part of a consolidated library and an updated space, you'd have a makerspace that would have that built in that available to all of our students up at the high school. It would open up lines of sight for our staff to be able to see. Currently, our stacks are this tall, so it's easy to get lost behind them and so forth. And there's a lot of nooks and crannies in our current library design. We would be able to add a student technology help desk. So Laura Jackson just talked about adjusting our IT sequence up at the high school. Part of that is, is then the ability for us to hire our own students as youth apprenticeship students, where the students are earning credit and working for the technology department here, gaining those skills, and they'd actually be working on our Chromebooks, assisting with student help, staff help, and so forth, and we'd be able to build that right into this library. It would allow us not to replicate services and especially materials, trying to function and set up two different libraries where we have to have two, in some cases, two copies or multiple copies of something in different locations, the same services in different locations. It would be consolidated into one. And it would give us a new space that is really set up for large group meetings. The idea that I could have, in essence, we could take this show on the road and have it up at the high school and have it built so that we can have a group presentation in there so it's easily accessible at that point in time. So the current space is kind of outlined up here in the slide right here in red. And so when working with the architect and talking with them, this is what the conceptual plan would look like. And again, it's conceptual. This is just an idea to see if we could actually consolidate down to one library and what that space would look like for our students. This plan does allow for, in the future, if you wanted to, we could actually incorporate what is known to the students and us at the high school, the study hall area up here, by reconfiguring and opening that up into a tiered environment if we ever so choose, and a seating environment. But really, the entrance to the library, and it's probably easier to see on the plans you have in front of you, is down here off of the P hallway up at the high school. It opens up with an entrance into the building. You have circulation in the front, and then you have large group area here in the middle for your classes, with the space and the ability to have two classes in there at one point in time. Working with the architects and talking with them, the library can function with almost 200 students in it at one time. And so that meets our needs when we look at our statistics currently. Over on the right-hand side of the diagram, there's a space for large group presentations. All of the stacks are near the top of the area right here. Currently, this conceptual design has about 19,000 placeholders for print materials at that point in time. On the left-hand side, a variety of different seating, along with the outside. And then over here on the left-hand side, you have a makerspace and technology area along with a student help desk here in the middle of the library at that point for our students to come and receive help. So that gives you an idea of what the conceptual plan would look like. The process for this is it would actually come out of two different budget years. As we've already started, Dave's crew's already started on the demolition side of this already and ripping different things out with a proposed opening for next school year at that point. So I'll open it up to questions that you have.
Just one real quick comment, just to emphasize that totally conceptual, that is not, this isn't a final plan by any means. And so when we met last week, we looked at where the circulation was at. The first thing I said, "Well, the circulation doesn't give me the ability to watch the library for supervision." So whether we move it over to the center, when we do some different things, that the key is conceptual. We then have to go to the architects, and this is what we would like, how's it going to work, and go from there. This is really the process, more so than what it's going to look like.
And maybe this isn't your question to answer, but I know that I'm putting you on the spot, but maybe Ralph could answer it. Otherwise, Mr. Slash probably knows this. So explain to me, because I'm not familiar, so where is the study hall? And if I'm in study hall, do I have the ability to go to the library? Can I check out and go into the library?
Yep. You currently have that now. So you can check out of either study hall and go to the library on a pass. Same thing here, you would go out of the study hall and come in the front entrance at that point. So our students have the ability to check out. We also have students that are in off hour down in our cafeterias during certain hours. They have the ability to also come to the library, so it's open as a resource for those students in both locations.
So does this new plan give us the ability to still have a class in there? And then how many students can check out of those two areas? Like, I want to make sure we have enough space, is what I'm...
Yeah. So this space, the way you see it right here, conceptually is built for 200 students in there at a time. So looking at our statistics of 550 visits a day, you divide that out by a seven-period day plus a resource hour. You could easily have two full class periods in here, or two full classes coming in of 30 students and still be able to have the seating around the outside for small group individuals and so forth at that point.
I think one of the things, too, you've got to think about, the libraries that, the library, I've been part of the discussions, the libraries we saw are so much different than what we're used to. It was, "Go away and be quiet," you know? And if you say anything, you're going to get a detention. These have become meeting spaces for students. This has become like the new off period. Instead of sitting in the cafeteria and sitting on those hard benches, they go up to these spaces, they're comfortable, they're doing their homework, they're collaborating. There's a lot more teamwork being done in spaces like this, but it still allows the teacher to bring in the class and still be able to do what they need to do in terms of research and checking out materials. But it's not probably a space that we're accustomed to when we went to school.
So realizing that we're still, what, 10 weeks into the year and adjusting in the consolidated East library and working on reducing inventory and so forth, but while we've got the students here, how's it working so far with having all of that in one space? If that's to be the vision going forwards, is it working okay? Are we climbing... If that's to be the vision going forwards, is it is it working okay? Are we climbing over each other?
I think at this point, look at the statistics, I visit up there every once in a while, Kim's probably there more than I am as our library media coordinator. We have that space. When looking at what we're currently in in the East Library, you actually gain space. So when we look at this conceptual design here, there's a lot of open space that we don't have in our current setup. And with that, all that furniture in there is flexible and movable. So when you look at that plan, being able to move stuff around and get more kids in there, if we so need to, we have the ability to do that. Along with all those added services that go with it.
I haven't heard anything, Paul. No teachers have or students have seen me and said, we can't get in the library, it's too packed, there's no space. And so like Tim is saying, if in this redesign, we're actually gonna create even a larger space, we'll have more than enough room for students. And classes to both be in there at the same time.
Students, any any challenges with the East Library as it sits today or you can get what you need out of it? Good, okay, thank you.
So taking a look at the plans, there are a number of kind of smaller, I'll call it kind of offices around the perimeter that are gonna be opened up, which I think is a great idea. Is there anything that goes on in those offices today that will be displaced, that will not be able to find a home in the future library?
I'll let Ralph speak to our office as we go. We're using that space already and some of it as we remodel, so there has been some movement and so forth. But it's really where you guys end up putting some of those offices in the future.
What we'll do is we have a we have a plan for, John and I have talked extensively with, we've talked to Dave, we've talked to. JD up at the high school, our head custodian, we are trying to actually weed out some things that are no longer. Part of what we're trying to do in education. And we are trying to find space for people to store items and materials and we think we can do that. We do have frankly, some wasted space too. And I think we just need to do a better job, it's like having teen children, you know, you gotta, you know, I'm not telling, you know. Saying that teachers are teenagers, but I'm saying, you know what, you might need to downsize a little bit to gain some space. For things that are really necessary for us to do the things we need to do. So yeah, you might you might take away some office space, but that's not unusual in schools. We might need to, you know, put some departments together, which we have done this year. Over on the west side, we took West and East English and they had separate offices and we combined them and it seems to be working.
One other real quick comment and that is we anticipate 300 to 500 less kids in the high school in the next 10 years as well. And so there will be space available more than we would like in many cases because there's just not gonna be the kids. And probably some teachers with that based on enrollment.
I'm sorry, I'm struggling with this office concept, can you just grab the microphone and give me, so who's in the office, I'm confused.
Well, more than anything, what we told the teachers is they're storing some school supplies.
It's more like a closet than an office?
Yeah, it's more of a storage area, but there is a little bit of space if they would like to go in there. And make some phone calls to families and things of that nature, so they don't have to do it in, you know, we don't want them to do that in front of students. And there's more privacy sometimes there than there is in their classrooms.
Okay.
Okay?
Superintendent Kirkagard took me upstairs and a couple of weeks ago and showed me that some of the demolition work, I think we are doing ourselves. It looks like it's well underway. Where are we at as far as budget wise, is this, has this been budgeted for? Are we on track that this will be open for the next school year? We don't have to pay, we don't have to try to pass a referendum to try to complete this project?
So what we are looking at, and Dave can answer this better than I, but we allocated about $200,000 from this year's budget for that project. And that's gonna be mostly renovation and so for next year, you'll approve that budget. We're anticipating close to a million dollars that we're gonna ask you to approve and so that becomes the next phase. We're not gonna ask for you to approve that tonight, that'll be part of the budget process. We had mentioned earlier that our maintenance is not what it needs to be. And we're gonna recommend that for the 2021 school year, that we're gonna go from one five to $2 million in maintenance. And so one of the things that was addressed on our referendum as well as in the community task force was the need to do things in the library. Some of those things we're gonna do with our increased dollars that you'll have to approve when the budget cycle comes around. And not that we'll take it totally off of the referendum if that's what happens, because you still have that East facility and what do we do with that? To maintain and make that better space, but but two budget cycles, about $200,000 this year. We'll be coming to you with about a million dollars for next year. Part of that million dollars is gonna be an increase in the overall from one five to two. And we're proposing that that's where we spend a lion's share of that for next year.
I'm assuming it's all new FFNE, I mean, we're not trying to reuse some nasty couch from somewhere, are we?
There's a little bit of of things that'll stay, but for the most part, that stuff is 40, 50 years old and it's shot.
That's what I'm saying, it needs to go.
Yeah, so it's done, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're getting some new stuff.
FFNE?
Furniture fixtures and equipment, sorry.
So in December, we're gonna come back and ask you to talk, to approve the concept of one library. And we've really already done that because we have one library this year, we've already started the weeding process. But but the reality is that a year from now or two years from now, if we don't like what we have done. You have the ability to go backwards and so because we haven't done, until we start tearing up the East Library and reusing that for other things. We could go and make the East look like the West and have two beautiful new facilities. Nobody's recommending that, but but it's not like once we make the decision. In a month to go forward, we, you can't look at the data and say, you know what, that wasn't our best decision. Because until we repurpose what's in East, you have the opportunity to say, you know what, we don't like the fact that there's only one, we can go backwards.
All right, Steph?
Looks like a good plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Superintendent Kirkagard, I guess I'll turn the last topic over to you and I think you've got Dave and Andy and.
I do.
Maybe Tim helping you, but we'll let you kick it off.
And so what we would like to do is to take a few minutes tonight until 7:30 and we'll we'll get most of that done. And we're gonna start with just some enrollment information, we talked a little bit about it at our last meeting. We have some new things that we'd like to share with that. We're then gonna go into our facilities from 4K all the way up through Silverbrook. If we don't get to through Silverbrook, we'll continue with Silverbrook, Badger and High School at the next meeting. And when we do the next meeting, then we are also gonna do additional questions. What's the cost for transportation? What's the the recommended size for for facility? How big is too big, how, some of those kind of things. And I know some of you have sent some questions in, many of them are gonna get answered tonight. As we go through the first part, but others will get answered as we go into December. And then once we're done with that December meeting, then we really have to decide what our next step is. What's the vision for the West Bend School District? How do we use the space at Silverbrook? What, how many schools are too many schools? Those, for the first two meetings, it's just information and that's gonna be pretty easy. But once we get past the information, then we really get into the hard part and that is, what do we do next? So for tonight is strictly just information and Andy has some slides and he's, I'm gonna go through the first couple and then he's gonna take it and go from there.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to share some information this evening. We'll talk a little bit about enrollment history as well as a projection, so what's happened in the past, what are we at this point in time? Somewhat loosely, a little bit less scientifically projecting because there are some of these children that have yet to be born. Little bit of open enrollment information, I would like to reiterate just a little bit of voucher information as well. And we did even just as of today, receive a little bit of information in regards to the participating schools. I'll hand it over to Dave, Mr. Ross, at this point in time to speak about existing facilities and then just and at any point, not just at the end. But certainly discussion questions and whatnot. Mr. President, are we thinking about still holding tight to the 7:30?
I'd like to, yeah.
Okay, would like to hit that. These are what we'd call in seats or students that are actually attending our schools, which is enrollment. Not to be confused with membership, which is what we just used to set the levy that helps determine state aid and whatnot. This does not quite line up, but I wanted to make sure I made it as big as possible. So going back to 2010, we have 6,800 students. As of this year, this third Friday count, we had 6,279. So you can see we have had, especially in recent years, a fairly steady drop. I did make that 2016 column orange on purpose, that's when we introduced the 4K program. So again, we have about 350 students over the last several years that have participated in that. Yes, they've been at a point six, but again, this is heads, this is just students. So we ended up pulling out about 350 of those students, we'd even see that trend that started back in 2013, 14 for our enrollment.
So yeah, it's 5,900, I mean, if you do the real quick math, from 68 to 59, we lost 900 kids since 2010.
We've spoken about diagonals and again, I like to see and I think it's important from a statistical standpoint to see. What's happened with a first grader, a kindergarten back in 2006 and where are they now? And why are some numbers the way that they are, you know, as you take a look at eighth grade to ninth grade, we see a little bit of a jump. That's because some of our private schools end their education. We received some students and we'll even take a look at that a little bit more. But then even just more recently, I threw just those three down towards the bottom and because I like to see the colored area for that whole time. And is that a trend that's continuing? Call it cohort survival and whatnot, but even just take a look at the three red. 2017, we had 408 kindergarteners, 387 then, we're in first grade the following year, 384. So even then, just in that, how are we able to keep those students and what's happening with enrollments and withdrawal? Again, we'll see that, but even just that little purple oval that I have down at the bottom left, 385, 408. Which is appears to be a little bit of an anomaly on the high end, 362, 364. So again, our graduation, our graduates are outpacing our new enrollment at that 4K, 5K. So again, very important information as we're looking to the future and trying to understand what this looks like for us.
When you look at, go back one slide, Andy, when you look at some of the colored ones and you go to the high school, you say, well, that doesn't make any sense at all. How do they fluctuate so much? And part of the reason is that up until three years ago, we were holding them based on the number of credits. So you might be a freshman two years in a row and so so if you were a freshman and didn't have the necessary credits. It doesn't show that you were a sophomore the next year, it shows you were a freshman and that freshman class increased significantly and the sophomore class decreased. We didn't lose that many kids, it's just and we changed that three years ago, I believe, is that correct, Laura? So that's, so now based on you're a freshman for one year, a sophomore for one year, a junior for one year, a senior, you might not graduate in four. But you're held based on chronological as opposed to number of credits and that's why it's so screwed up in those colored columns to the, in the high school.
So do we count, do we count them twice senior year then, I mean, what if I didn't graduate? What do I, do I get counted twice as a senior?
Yeah, if you if you come back to your super, and I was gonna refer to, you're gonna be a super senior so long. Because after 20, you're opt out and you no longer get free appropriate education.
Well, on some of these, we must have had seniors, we must had a lot of kids graduating in 11th grade. I mean, we, you look at like 2009, going from 634 11th graders to 479. I mean, we lose well over 100 kids going from 11th into 12th on several of these years.
And somebody, and that's why.
So they must have graduated.
Well, they graduated, they they went someplace else, maybe they were aged out and they quit school, there's a variety of things. And so those numbers before the last two or three years in in high school really become difficult to maneuver. Because there's so many variables and I can't really justify how we go from six to five to four to seven or to six again. And it really is, a lot of it's based on that chronological order part as opposed to. And we also have junior graduation and early graduation, but but certainly not that number, we didn't have 100 kids graduated.
It looks like it's gotten better in recent years, but you go back 10 years ago, it was, sorry. Keep going.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Let's take a little bit of a look at our elementary by building dating back five years. So Decorah, over the course of the five years, at 451 now at 368, they've dropped 80 students during that period of time. So we're starting to see, it might not be at the at the middle or even the high school, but at the elementaries, we're starting to see some drops. Fair Park went from 438 down to 354, it's 85 students. Green Tree dropped 130 students during this period of time. Jackson down 65, McLean down 50, total is about 420 students over this five year period. So these are the smaller classes now that we're seeing at this lower level that are going to be getting older and coming into Silverbrook at Badger and into the high school eventually. Let's take a look at.
Andy, before we go off that slide, just a quick clarification, when did we, and I'm assuming this shows the current model, so. Barton is out, those students are redirected to Green Tree. Is this in the current redistricting as well? Because I was talking with my wife tonight and she said, didn't we roll everybody into Green Tree and then a year later? Redistrict and take students out of Villa Park and move them to McLean? And I'm just trying to understand the dynamics behind these numbers.
I will verify.
Everything in one shot? Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, great question. Silverbrook dropped to 94 students and again, the the smaller class sizes have just barely started touching them. But again, over this five year period and at Badger, 92 students. Both buildings now under 1,000. We do have it East-West as well as high school total in this time period, 2,278 students to start out, 1,184. So again, they they haven't seen, it's only, that is 100 students over this five year period. But they haven't seen those smaller class sizes reaching them at this point in time. And again, this is the history, it's already happened, really then what's that trend look like then moving forward? So as we start to look then, what does a projection look like moving forward? And again, what what we've done and Superintendent Kirkagard has made this and there are some subtle, subtle numbers here as we, subtle shading, excuse me. Rolling these same students forward and I say conservatively in the term that we are potentially holding more students here. These numbers could even be smaller potentially, but again, it's a little bit at this point in time of making. An assessment of what we believe is accurate, but at the elementary level, dropping down to 1,820 students and then probably potentially flattening out. You can see then in 2025, 26, as we have had a dip at Silverbrook, then flattening out and even rebounding just slightly at 728 students. Badger then, two years after that, flattening out and even rebounding potentially a little bit in 2027, 28. And then we haven't even been able to get to the high school yet and seeing some of those, but as we start taking a look. The high school at a high could be as, less than 1,700 students potentially even dropping into the 15, 16 hundreds as well.
So two things, one is this doesn't look at any of those diagonals that Andy talked about and that's pretty alarming is the diagonals. And the other one is when you look at the elementary, 25, 26, in some of those cases, mom and dad haven't even met yet, let alone the baby is not there yet. So we've got some projections that I don't know if they're 100% accurate based on.
When you look at this though, are you also looking at housing trends and what's left to build in the city versus the local towns that all feed into our district versus the villages, et cetera? I mean, how much are you looking at that? I mean, you know, I agree, there's this mom and dad haven't met yet, but it's also a population situation. Do we have more subdivisions that, you know, are gonna be producing single family homes, et cetera?
This is the type of information that we need to start taking a look at. We did just receive an email today from the Village of Jackson where they've shared their next economic outlook that goes out through 2050. They are showing some pretty significant growth based on projections. But we need to take a look at that because and it's not even just growth of the area, which is empty land that could be developed into residential. Potentially with children and families, but it's also the turnover of the housing that we're gonna see. And that's actually one of the the larger variables because it's a pretty select family that's able to build a new home. That turnover with the baby. That turnover with the baby boomers and whatnot, you'll actually see more significant growth if you start seeing turnover in some of those already established neighborhoods, where they're just kind of begging for children to start running up and down the streets and coming to our schools.
Nancy, some of that will be in December. We're going to talk about some of the enrollment projections, south of Pleasant Valley Road, and still look at where the people are coming from. So it'll be there in December.
This is our withdrawal and enrollment. We took a look at September of seventeen to September of 2018, all of the different categories upon which we record when we have student changes. So they're coming and going, how does that look? So everything from below compulsory age, which is our little ones, which it's understandable that we have withdrawals. We are educating children that hit our schools, specifically Head Start programming, 4K, that do leave. Very seldomly do they actually enroll. Dropouts, we show withdrawals from there. Again, you wouldn't see, seldomly would you see an enrollment. Few expulsions, foreign exchange, that's a few of the students that come and go. Homeschooling, we do see activity there. Out of country, we're starting to see more and more activity under that area. Out of state, which that's, in fact, when we go to the next slide, which is eighteen to nineteen, you'll even see more activity. We do have private school out of district, which is actually private school out of our geographic boundaries, as opposed to the private school that's within our district. You'll see only one withdrawal, but a hundred and eleven enrollments, and that's primarily from the eighth grade to the ninth grade transition, or any of those natural progressions where the schools end, and we start receiving those students. We did receive two hundred and sixty-seven, and during this time period, two hundred and sixty-seven withdrawals from public schools within Wisconsin, only seventy-five enrollments. So interestingly enough, there are families that are moving out of the area, not seeing those being directly replaced with new students. And that really rounds out. I think we just start to see some students. So net negative of a hundred and twenty-five from September of seventeen to September of eighteen. Let's look at September of eighteen to September of 2019.
Andy, if we can just hang on that slide for one second. So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, like on the out-of-state, fifty-five withdrawals, so we had fifty-five students move out in this timeframe because the family was moving out of state?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. Job transfers, whatnot, but yep.
Good, thank you.
And like homeschooling, five withdrawals, that's a change, that doesn't mean there's only five kids being homeschooled in our district, it's just that the change increased by five.
Yep. So we recorded in Skyward, our student system, that there is a withdrawal, where we noted that the family chose to be homeschooled at some point in time. But at one point, they were educated here, so.
So then, on the flip side, the homeschooling one, where it says enrollments of seventeen, that seventeen kids said, or those families said, were coming back to the district?
Yep, exactly. Same situation, but looking at September of eighteen to September of nineteen, net negative of a hundred and twenty-eight, so fairly consistent. There wasn't anything tremendously large. We did have, though, public schools in Wisconsin, there's three hundred and twelve withdrawals. This time, we did see a little bit of an uptick, two hundred and one enrollments. I'd like to point out, the private school in district, which is that number one, I want you to remember that just a minute when we're talking about vouchers. But we did see seventy enrollments from private schools within our district. Not a lot of change. We had more out-of-state withdrawals, we had our twenty-nine dropouts, so, but I do want you to remember. But again, very similar to seventeen, eighteen, a little bit of changes in numbers, but I do want you to remember that private school in district of number one, so. Any questions on this? Okay. Going to talk about open enrollment out a little bit. I have three years of history. We actually did go back to ten. I didn't think that was too terribly relevant. I think if we just look at the foreseeable past, if that's not an oxymoron. We did have one less student here in September. However, when we look at last year, four hundred and seventy-six, that was throughout the whole school year. I am anticipating that bottom right number, the four hundred and fifty-seven, that literally changes every day. We have students coming and going every day. And so I anticipate that our open enrollment out, as well as our open enrollment in, will fluctuate, and that drives revenue and expenditures and whatnot. But fairly consistent, though, we've got Cedarburg, that's hovering right around fifty. Germantown, about fifteen each of the three years. Grafton, ten to fifteen. Kiwaskam, we did see an increase, and now we dropped down just a little bit, maybe due to graduations, students returning and whatnot. McFarland, that's a virtual school down southeast side of Madison, but primarily. Merrill, another virtual program. Northern Ozaki is a blend. They do have a pretty strong, a very robust virtual program, but we're close enough to them that they could actually be attending. They have a nature-based program as well. Port Washington, a few students here and there. Slinger, that's one of our large ones. They've been upwards of two hundred, slow decline here over the last couple of years, but still above a hundred and fifty-eight students. We did have quite a few districts that were under ten students. I've captured them, that it's fifty, seventy-two, and sixty-three. Wasn't worth noting, but so we really grabbed all those districts that had in excess of ten students. Graphical representation of that, just so you can see it in different terms rather than a chart. But we have a fairly steady mixture of both resident districts, or excuse me, surrounding districts, as well as a couple virtual that are impacting us with our open enrollment out.
Andy, can I ask a question on this? Just so I, just so I know that I'm understanding the data correctly. So let's take the first row on open enrollment out Cedarburg. So seventeen, eighteen, there are forty-one students. So let's say, I'm a sophomore, I decided I'm going to open enroll out to Cedarburg. So I'm there. Now in 2018, nineteen, am I counted in that column as well?
You would be.
Okay. So this is not net new.
Not new.
This is.
Consistent.
Consistent. Thanks.
Exactly. Thank you for asking. Again, graphical representation, but again, districts around us, virtual school. I want to talk a little bit about where those students, those three hundred and sixty students, excuse me, four hundred and sixty students, where would they, if they were still a part of our district, if open enrollment went away tomorrow, where would they be attending? Hundred and forty-five at the high school, sixty at Badger, sixty at Silverbrook, and then we have a sprinkling. And I hope you can understand the abbreviations, but we have Decorah at thirty-one, Fair Park at twenty-four, Green Tree, thirty-three. We do have an uptick at Jackson, sixty-two. And then McLean at thirty-nine. We had two students that we couldn't tell exactly, and that's, there's a story behind that. As we're looking at this information, we did find some anomalies related to that. I think even more interesting is if we regress back and pretend all of these students were in fourth grade or less. We've eliminated the high school, Silverbrook, Badger. Now they're all at Decorah, Fair Park, Green Tree, Jackson. Almost all of these numbers doubled, almost. In excess of doubling, there wasn't an anomaly that one spiked even more there, and to me, that means that we've been trending fairly consistent, because a lot of those children now are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old. If they were, again, nine years old, that's consistent, so. Any questions on this information? I think it's really interesting to take a look at that. Another interesting piece, is we take a look, and the most recent that we've looked at this information or studied this and made this calculation, was sixteen, seventeen, sixty-nine percent. And that trending, why I circled that in red, it's within one percent of this five-year window. We're sitting at sixty-nine, seventy percent of these students that are open enrolling that have never been within our schools. We've never had the chance to educate them. I think it's a really, it'd be a really interesting world to see what it would look like with our test scores, and with all these other things. And I get it, that parents choose to open or enroll out and in for a variety of reasons, jobs, opportunities, whatever that might be. But it'd be really interesting to see what we'd look like if the seventy percent of these students, we had that chance to educate them. We won't, I don't, I'm not naive to that. But it is, it is interesting that the number is that high. I did want to share just a little bit of new information. This is that private school voucher. This is the dollar amount or the levy. Again, it's doubled and then doubled again within the last two years. I just, for consistency purposes, on average, eight thousand two hundred dollars approximately per student. I held that true for all three years. So we went from fifty-eight students to a hundred and fifteen to two hundred and twenty-six. It was shared to me, was it St. John's?
Yeah.
Was that the school?
It was their school in town. But is it Beth? Is there? Is it St. John's?
St. John's. I believe it's St. John's, but they were new this year. So again, my assumption is that we did not educate any of those children, there was nothing that leave, left. Remember that one withdrawal? If there was more children that left, we would have seen more withdrawals in that previous, previous column a few slides ago. So again, as I take a look at St. John's, in the new hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen students, odds are, they all qualified for, or not all of them, but the families that did qualify, that was the new voucher money that we saw this year, so.
We were really nervous that, not through open enrollment, but through just those diagonals, that that's where our kids were going. And it wasn't. There was one student that stayed in district, a few others that went out of district, but we went up a hundred and eleven kids. And so two reasons that more than likely had happened, one is those new school came on board. The other, a few years ago, they changed the whole, you used to have to open enroll to a public and then go to the private, and then go to the charter, but now you don't. So you could literally move to Jackson today from someplace else, enroll in Calumrin Lutheran, and qualify, and we would never have you anywhere. We wouldn't have you as a student that left, a student whatever, but you live in the district, and it's wherever you live, they pay the voucher and go from there. And so, so new school, but also, when they change that, that policy that allows you to just move and be counted, we know that there are families who are moving in for the sole purpose of going to a charter school.
Transitioning right now over to the facilities information, I think we're doing okay on time, and you're getting the jacket.
While Dave is transitioning, the first one is with our 4K program, and you have in front of you the sheet as well. And we just wanted to show you what's the enrollment, and Emily went through those already, as well as what's our capacity. And so we're not going to spend much time on the 4K. This is really all we're going to spend. But the reality is that it looks like we're at close to capacity in some of those spots, but in many times, it's all it means is us having to add another teacher, because we're at capacity with the number of people there. And so that, and not all of them, because we can't add a ton more to Newburgh, because there's only so much space at Newburgh. But if we had five hundred kids who wanted to be part of the 4K program, we would find partners to make that happen. Is that fair, Emily? I mean, we might struggle a little bit, but we truly, it's not like we're out of room and we don't have any more, and we'd shut the doors. We just have to figure out where we're going to put them, because we can easily add more spots.
Correct. And several of the sites actually out of there, and stations in plan, where you could add.
Right.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to review our facilities, start off on this little journey. We're trying to get through Rolfs, all the way through Silverbrook. It's going to be a tight timeline, but where I'd really like to spend my time talking to you tonight is really about the methodology that we use to get to the comparisons that My technology guy really let me down with this one.
Well, now, now it's heating into your time. Uh-oh.
So the first slide that we're going to talk about is on, actually on the kindergarten program. Don, you want to take that one?
On the 4K program, or the?
4K program.
Yeah, 4K is really what I just went through, and they use this, their handout for that information. And it's all 4K wanted to show you where we're at, where the numbers are, what our capacity is, but also let you know that the capacity really isn't the issue. And I mentioned when Emily was here earlier up in front, that it really is a win-win situation, or actually, three wins, in that discussion about whether we would be financially ahead if we put the 4Ks in our school, and not only would we go backwards with helping out parents, go backwards with our providers, but it costs us more money too. So I think we can put to rest the 4K program, because that's, that's there. While Tim and Dave are working on that, the next slide, if everybody has the sheet, really is our numbers that we have set for the district. That K four, or K two is twenty-four, three eight is twenty-nine, nine twelve is thirty, and then what's the normal-sized classroom for a kindergarten, an elementary, and a secondary? And kindergarten, for the most part, they try to get about twelve hundred. Some of them might be ten fifty, some of them might be whatever, but a kindergarten classroom is usually a little bit bigger. They have a bathroom in the, in the room. Elementary's still in that nine hundred range, and then secondary, eight fifty to nine hundred. And you get thirty kids in an eight fifty room at the high school, it's pretty crowded, it's packed.
Those are for core classrooms as well. So one of the standards that we use to come up with some numbers for you tonight is what's called a facility condition index. And it's actually an index that was developed by the U.S. Navy to evaluate their vessels and their assets that they had. And it's really a ratio of the reproduction cost of the building to the total building repair costs. So if you had a building that was, had a reproduction cost of a million dollars, and you had ninety thousand dollars' worth of repairs that you'd need, your condition index would be at nine percent. So the numbers that we use were developed at a very high level. Some were, came from information that we had already for our repair costs, as well as square foot costs. We also looked at the building construction cost of two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, and that was from Citizens Task Force. They gave a range of plus or minus twenty percent, which is pretty, pretty large. So if I'm doing math quickly in my head, it looks like it would be somewhere in the range of, what, a hundred and eighty dollars to two hundred and seventy dollars in that ballpark? I think the reality of it is, in today's world, if we were to build a new building today, a new elementary school, we'd be closer to the two seventy than the, than the one So I really don't want to spend a lot of time on this slide, but it's just a kind of a breakdown of what you can expect, given the different percentages that you might come across. So I guess the really important thing to remember is that as your facility condition index goes up, you're going to see higher repair costs, higher utility costs, and less satisfied facility users. So the first building we're going to look at is Rolfs. And Rolfs was built in nineteen eighty-nine. It's currently used as our early childhood center and our Head Start program. So I sat down with Emily, and we tried to go over what the capacity for that building was, and I left there kind of with a blank look on my face, because she's got so many kids coming in and out of there on a daily basis, it's, it's head spinning. So we really don't want to use a building to one hundred percent capacity. We'll try to stick at ninety percent being at our highest level. So given that, we have a little bit of a variance, we have room for about two more students at that building. So we're, as I said, we're very tight at that building.
Just a little bit, in fairness, some of those hundred and sixteen students are only there a half day. Many of them are there full day, because they, they do a full-day 4K and they do some other things there as well. But some of those hundred and sixteen are morning or afternoon, so it's, it's tight, and there's a full load over there, but, but we do have a little bit of extra space, because some of them come and go.
So at Rolfs, there actually is a basement area, it's a downstairs area, and there are two Head Start classrooms down in the lower level. There is no natural daylight down there. On the main floor, we have some early childhood spaces, some support services, and again, some more Head Start rooms.
Are your color codes correlate to that chart? So like that green room is good to go, but that red room needs work?
No, the red room is actually, is the Head Start room. So again, there's a.
No correlation on this one.
No correlation. Just, just happened that way on this particular one. I didn't even notice that, but.
Okay.
Then on the top floor, again, you can see how it's, it's laid out. When we developed those color codes, we, we did that, again. When we developed those color codes, we, we did that, again, on a, on a pretty loose basis, on a square foot basis. We have not got around to going to each individual room and evaluating each room that, that's going to come after this next process, so. So Rolfs has a reproduction cost of about $3.1 million. There are some things that need to be done over there, primarily interior finishes and some masonry work with a, with a capital project forecast of $232,000, and we end up with a facility condition index of 7%.
Now Dave, on Rolfs, I believe we've said in the past, from an operational perspective, HVAC specifically, this is the worst building in the district, correct?
From a, from a utility cost per square foot.
Does, how do we factor that into the FCI or can't you really?
You really can't. That's more of an operational thing, and we will be bringing the operational costs back to you guys at a later date.
So go back to Rolfs a second, the last one. And so two things, one is Dave used the same formula for construction across the board. We think it's probably a little light as far as the, the cost of new LED lights, the cost of flooring, the cost of whatever. And so that 232,000 might be 280. And, and by doing that, but it's consistent across every building that we looked at. The other part is that if the construction cost is the same and that 230 actually goes to 313, now it goes from 7% to 10%. So now it's out of the yellow and into the next area. But the other part is we're not so sure that in some of the buildings, we could replace them for 31 either. And so that there's variables on both sides. One is the variable that goes with the cost of bringing it up to speed. The other one is the variable on the cost of building it. I guarantee you that when you get to Silverbrook, Badger, and the high school, you're not going to build those at the same cost as you are the elementaries because of locker rooms and gym space and all the things that go with it.
And speaking of that, I have a question about the building reproduction cost. Is that the square footage of the building times the 270?
225.
225?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the square footage of the entire building or the space used by the students?
The gross exterior space.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
So Decorah is a fairly old building, 81% of the building is over 50 years old. It's a four section building. And what that means is that there are four classes of every grade level in, in the building. It's got a nice site, about 11 and a half acres, and what, three, three additions on it. Our current enrollment is 368 students. Where we'd want to be at the, at the worst possible case scenario is 468. So we have really room for another 100 students at Decorah. Again, you can kind of see how the building is laid out based on what's, what's being utilized and how it's being utilized. So our building reproduction cost at Decorah is 12.5 million dollars, and there's about $2.5 million worth of capital projects that need to be done there, from just finishes to some plumbing repairs. And there's some roofing that is going to come due in the next few years. And we end up with an FCI of 20%.
So Dave, go back if you would to the rooms. So if you were to go and talk to Adrian at Decorah, she would say it's going to really be difficult to get 100 more kids in. Not that we can't, but some of the rooms that are there are going to have to be maybe repurposed into another classroom, okay? And so, so we have special, some of our, our specials maybe have a large room and they could have a smaller room. But, but it will be in all of our buildings, it's going to, they're built for this many kids and we can get those many kids in there, but it's going to be teaching in a little bit different environment than what they have taught in the last 10 years.
That's, that's very true. So like the, the room that's in purple between the, the red rooms on the left side of the screen, there are actually only about two or three people working out of that room. But space in an elementary school is, is a vacuum and if there's any available, something will get sucked into it.
So Don, when you just made that comment though, I mean, as we're looking at that, with all due respect to the Citizens Task Force, I don't know that they necessarily thought about the ramifications of adding 100 students to a school like this. What does that do to the lunch hour and the ability to get those kids through the cafeteria? And as a parent, I'm not real fond of my student eating lunch at 10:00 a.m. when they have to go to school until 3:30.
You might not hit requirements for PE time, just like going through a gym or whatever.
As we go a little bit into December 2nd, those are things that, you know, there's some, obviously some economy of scale, that, that you can run a building at 500, maybe a little bit less than you can per square foot than you can at 400. But once you get to a certain point in time, then you need more gym space, more P, more lunchroom space, more specials, the music, the art, all of those kinds of things require more. And now I need more square foot per kid as opposed to less square foot per kid. But there's no question that in all of our elementaries, as well as Silverbrook, Badger, and the high school, we can put more kids in there than what we currently have. It just, that'll be the, you know, the elephant in the room is how many is, how many can you put in without going to a 10 o'clock lunch break?
Dave, your capital projects forecasts are all through 2030.
Right.
Would it be hard to give us a number for 2025?
I could do that, but then your, your condition index is going to get worse and worse and worse because you're adding more and more dollars in there. So I tried to keep things fairly compact and probably within, you know, looking out 10 years is probably 10 years worth of stuff that's been deferred that should be done now, so.
Good point, yep.
So Joel, if it's okay, I, I wouldn't mind going through the elementaries. I know that we said 7:30 hard stop and so it's going to be 7:30 rule. That's your call as to how much of this you want to cover and how much you don't. Wherever you lay off today, we're just going to start on the second, knowing that you're not, Dave's not going to get through all of this in the next minute and a half, minute and a half. And so you have to decide from the board where you want to end up.
Well, Tim fumbled with the computer for a good five minutes.
I think Tim owes us a snack out of that, Tim.
Are you guys okay for another 15 minutes or so? Yeah, we'll keep going. Let's do it.
The next building to look at is Fair Park. Fair Park has had numerous additions. Again, a good portion of that building is over 50 years old. There were a couple of small additions around 2000, and that was when most districts in the state went to all-day kindergarten. So they needed some extra kindergarten space and there, those rooms, or those additions consist of a room or two. Again, Fair Park currently at 354 students, maximum capacity at 468. So again, the ability to put about another 114 students in. Again, the room layout, you can see that some, some classrooms there are being utilized as book storage rooms, so we do have some available space. Building reproduction cost, again, about 12 and a half million dollars, but we have about $4 million worth of projects that need to be done. Primary, the thing that really puts Fair Park over the top is that we have a steam to hot water conversion, an HVAC system that needs to be completely replaced for about one and a half to $2 million.
And so like I mentioned earlier, that, that 12.5 for building reproduction, I'm not sure you can build that size building for 12.5. You know, by the time you add another 20%, now you're, now you're at 14, okay? And that may be closer, maybe even 15. But then that also drops the FCI down unless the 3.9 is actually 5.2 and then it moves the FCI. So there's a lot of guessing involved with this, but it does just put everything in perspective. And the one thing we can say is that Dave's numbers are consistent for every building.
And I guess the other thing that I'd like to emphasize is that, that reproduction cost puts the building back exactly where it was in 1950, whatever. It doesn't account for anything, any improvements in, in the way kids get educated today.
And again, Dave.
And that's, I'm sorry. That's where my question from before was, are you talking about this, the footprint times new construction cost per square foot? But that doesn't mean the design has to be exactly the same.
No. Right now, I'm really looking at the building that we have and what it's going to take to put it back to being in good shape.
And that's what the capital projects forecast is for, not the reproduction cost. That's a, so we can have an apple samples.
Right.
Okay.
So Dave, in that, in that 3.9 capital projects, again, that's really the, the mission critical stuff, the HVAC. The lighting that we looked at in that first grade room, that's debatable if it's mission critical, but I'm assuming that upgrade is not in the 3.9, correct?
That upgrade is.
It is, okay.
Yes, we've accounted for some lighting and ceiling upgrades. We've really tried to be kind of strategic in how we've done ceiling and lighting upgrades because we were behind the eight ball when it came to roofing. So it certainly didn't make any sense whatsoever to start doing ceiling and lighting projects when we're going to get leaks on top of it. We're starting to get a little bit ahead on the roofing end of things now, so we can start going back into certain areas in different buildings and start to do those LED retrofits.
Okay, thank you.
Green Tree is a little bit larger facility. It's a four and a half section building. We have 340 students in Green Tree this year, and we have the ability to have about 528. So we have a variance of 238 students. That math isn't right. Anyway, there's a lot of room for students at Green Tree. We, there was four classroom addition put on. Green Tree is a little bit different than a lot of our other elementaries in that we have a separate gym and cafeteria, so. Again, you can see some spaces that aren't being utilized. There's one room that's actually, we found out today, is actually being used for specialized space that we weren't aware of, that's in the white now. So about 13 and a half million dollars to reproduce Green Tree. There's about $1.7 million worth of projects that need to be done there. About 10 years ago, and it was actually the year before I started, the, the district had really started to look at the capital budgets and they put a million dollars into Green Tree in about 2008, 2009. Also, there were a lot of improvements done when the addition was put on in 2014. So the heating system was addressed, there's still a lot of rooftop units, but there are a number of things that were upgraded at that point.
So just one other quick note, when the task force or when they looked at using deferred maintenance as a way to pay for part of the project, you need to make sure and emphasize, and I'm telling you, but you need to tell the public, we don't have that $1.7 million in deferred maintenance in an account. You know, Fair Park was 4 million, Decorah was 3. And so that, it's not like there's 7 million that we can take from deferred maintenance and offset part of your, your building cost. If you do it, you, you won't have to spend that money, but you're spending more money you don't have. So it's, we're going to have to figure out how to come up with that money.
So we had FCI at Green Tree of 13%. So it's in, it's, it's not horrible, but it's, we can be recovered. Jackson, about a four and a quarter section facility, has a number of additions on it. Like I've mentioned before, that I'm not sure the, the construction date on the original building, but I have found in the foundation scratched in the basement the year 1915. So that's what I'm going with. Again, a couple of additions put on in the, around 2000 to accommodate all-day kindergarten. We have a capacity for 494 students and we currently have 351 students in the building. Then you can see how that building is being utilized by grade level and by departments. Building reproduction cost, about 13.3 million dollars and about $4.8 million in deferred maintenance. There's about a million dollars worth of roofing alone that needs to be done at Jackson. Again, we have kept Jackson going, but we are starting to experience some significant issues down there. We had the boilers go out this year, we managed to get them back going again. Of course, it was the boiler that was furthest to the wall, so it was difficult to get anything apart. So we're, we're managing, but it is getting to a critical point.
Dave, how far out is the, the roofing issue?
How far out is it?
Two years, three years, 12 months?
Two years ago.
How much longer can we, can we keep this thing going?
We can get a couple of years out of it. We may have to, you know, do some pretty drastic patching, but you know, as soon as we hear, we get somebody down there and get it taken care of as best we possibly can. But there are some sections that are, the insulation's totally saturated on.
So if you would go back to Jackson, a couple of things with Jackson we point out. One is the, the site is less than six acres. So of our elementaries, this is by far the smallest site for a facility. The other one is just to, to kind of put it in perspective, the current facility is 59,000, okay? With less kids, we were proposing 70,000, okay? And part of that is you put a new gym on, you have better library space. And so, so when we look at all of these facilities, even though they're bigger than what we need, they're not 21st century buildings to meet the needs of 21st century. And so when we designed Jackson Elementary, could we have dropped it a little bit? Probably. Would we have came in with a 50,000, you know, with less kids, a 50,000 square foot facility, you know, because we know the importance of having a separate gym space from lunchroom. We know some of those other things, and so that becomes part of the challenge across the board is that, that, but if you look at Jackson, just because we just drew it up last year, I think it was 70,000 or a little over 70,000.
72,000.
With less kids than what the 59 was designed for.
The last elementary is McLean Elementary. McLean is actually by square footage, I believe it's the largest elementary that we have. About a four and a quarter section building. It actually has a pretty good site, although it does have a big hill running through the middle of it and springs that pop up in the middle of everywhere that you don't anticipate. But at McLean, we have a capacity of 549 students and we currently have, I'm sorry, 482 students. And we have, that's the enrollment, and then the utilization rate is 494. So McLean is about as full as you'd want to get it. Again, that building is pretty old. Three quarters of the building is over 50 years old. We have two floors at McLean that are being fully utilized. The cafeteria is actually on the, in the basement level. So to reproduce McLean would be about 15.6 million, and we have about $1.4 million worth of capital that needs to go in it. And again, that number is, is down about four, no, let's take it back, about seven or eight years ago, we actually put $3.5 million into that building with new ceiling and lighting and new, completely new HVAC system and controls. Just want to go through Silverbrook or leave that one until next time?
If we were to close the elementary school, and you just mentioned that this school, we just put in new HVAC and lighting, would that be a dumb one to close just because of that, the fact that that's got decent HVAC and ceiling and lights in it?
There's so many factors that you have to look at to make that determination. You know, from, from, from a strictly maintenance facility point of view, yeah, I definitely would not close that one. But there are so many other factors that you have to weigh going forward.
The land value there alone is probably better at McLean as far as land value to resell, you know what I'm saying, where it is?
You know, the other part is that even though... You know, the other part is that even though structurally, hey, it's the oldest building, structurally, it's- it's a brick-solid building. Some of our other buildings are- are metal buildings with a little brick fascia on the front, and they just really have outlived their useful life period. You know, you only can get so many years out of a metal building. And so the brick building, the big McLean, even though that has some internal things, you know, if a guy had unlimited dollars and you could come in with- with all this money, you could really make McLean shine and be there, but it would cost a ton of money to do that, too. But structurally, it's at least a solid building compared to some of the other ones.
So I'm just going to gloss over Silverbrook, but I wanted to get to the summary sheet so you can kind of see where the condition index ends up at- at all of our facilities. You can see it all on one page. I don't think there's anything there that really surprises anybody, but at least we have been able to- to put together a consistent methodology for looking at it and rating things rather than, you know, giving it off the- off the tough letter grade.
So when we come back in December, we'll hit Silverbrook Badger, the high school. We're going to talk about transportation, we're going to talk about some population patterns and where that's happening. We've got some other questions that, you know, the high school, what's the policy for going from two to one if a person looks at that, and I propose we do that or not, but you do have a board policy, and so that will be all things that we'll bring back in December. And then after that, we really then have to- to have the difficult part of what do we do next? What kind of- what's the, you know, Rolfs is one of our newer buildings, and it's not a terrible facility, it's just not a good place for what we're using it for, okay? And we have space available. It would be- make way more sense to use some of our space available for Rolfs because that would be an easy transition and a good one, but what we don't want to do is to move Rolfs two years from now and then move it again four years from now because we decided that would be a better elementary space than- than Silverbrook space or whatever the case may be. And so that really is going to be some difficult decisions. How do we go get input from community members? We all know that there's a petition at Jackson, there's been comments on the board from people within West Bend as well about the 800-size capacity school, we're not excited about that for people who live in town as well, and- and so what's the, you know, we want to go get input, but we also need to have a plan before we get that input, otherwise it comes back A to Z and we really- it takes too long. And I'm not saying we have it all in place before we do those meetings or get the input, but we should really have some kind of directive as to this is what we're looking at, what are your thoughts, as opposed to just what are your thoughts on anything willy-nilly because then it's going to be hard pressed for us to- to narrow that down to come up with logical suggestions.
It almost appears that we've never, ever, ever had enough in our budget to take care of the facilities that we've ever, ever, ever had. I mean, if- if we had $3 million in our budget this year and next year and next year and next year, we still wouldn't be able to accomplish the dollar amounts that you've put on these buildings.
That's- that's true, but there were a number of years ago, I want to say about maybe 13, 14 years ago, there was like 300, $300,000, $400,000 being put into capital, and that was it. So once you start to dig that hole, it gets deep really fast.
Yeah. So but just another thing that we have to talk about when we talk to the public is that we're about $800 below the state average. So we- that our budget, our spending with tax dollars and local is- is $9,700 bucks a kid. 97 or 98? 9700 bucks a kid. State average is 10.5. So that's $800,000 or $8,000, $800 a kid. You take that times 6,000 kids, that's 4.8 million dollars, just to be at the state average, and it's higher now than it was before because they're- they're increasing that bottom. But if you- and that's been 23 years, 25 years. If you take 20 years at- at $5 million that the state has paid that we haven't, and nobody- we- we're proud of the fact that we're a low-spending district, but you would infuse another $100 million, $150 million into the district by just taxing at the state average, well, you wouldn't be talking about, see, you still might need a referendum once in a while to build a building, but you wouldn't need a referendum to do all of the other things that we're talking about because right now you have, you know, you rob Peter to pay Paul. But if you had that state average, you wouldn't be having those discussions. We- we wouldn't be talking about how do we do the LED lighting at Decorah. We would do it 10 years ago, five years ago, because that would have been next year- that year's project, and- but it's not, and we're not going to change that, but that is part of the reason why we're in the hole that we're in is because when they changed the formula back in 93? 93, that's what locked us in, and even if we wanted to do things, we can't do above the- beyond that formula.
In the reality, you know, and I use that word "reality," I think you were the one who said it several weeks or months ago, that we have declining enrollment here, and maybe we don't need five elementary schools anymore, maybe we don't need two- two high schools anymore. And that's something that I think it's going to be tough to talk about, but the enrollment numbers are what they are. There's no hiding behind that, and it's not, you know, we want to, you know, all of our schools to be new and beautiful and stand out above, you know, our surrounding districts. We need to be, you know, competitive, but the reality of our enrollment, I think, kind of dictates a little bit of what the future looks like for our buildings.
Well, and one last comment, though. I mean, this continued idea that we're the taxpayer saviors and we're going to save everyone all these dollars really has come back to bite us, quite honestly, because now we're gazillions of dollars in need of repairs, and we can't get- we can't get that done in our budget because we're a low-spending district, which again, great idea at the time, but now we're really in the hole. I mean, if we would have spent an extra $1.5 million or $2 million a year, we wouldn't be where we are right now. So, I mean, I don't like to pay ta- I don't like to see my taxes increase either, but I also don't like to get a big giant bill because we've got sewage flying through a building either. I mean, that's- that's not okay. So we have to find a happy medium, and people are going to have to understand that it's not going to come without a cost. I mean, we don't- we don't sell widgets here. We're turning out leadership, and we're turning out little individuals. So we have to come to the realization that we're going to have to somehow get our costs under control in some areas, but we're going to have to spend more in other areas.
And you said it, too. Our neighbors have been fortunate at the right time. Most of them have new facilities, and so not that that makes the system better, but it makes it more attractive sometimes as to why enrollment here is in and outs. There aren't many of our neighboring districts that don't either have or will soon open up a brand-new facility.
And some of those neighbors are not far down the road from where our families live. And Tony kind of whispered to me, I know some of those families. Well, you know, we've, you know, some friends of ours that live out by the West Bend Country Club, it is right down the road from Slinger. And their two daughters go to Slinger, and they've never, ever stepped foot in our schools. And, you know, they've got a new facility down there. I'm not- I don't know if that's the reason they go there, but, you know, it's either new facility in Slinger or they go to, I don't, what would that be, McLean for them? Probably by the country club?
Well, yeah, that'd be McLean, I think.
But, and I fear that if- if something, you know, the task force, what they recommended as far as closing Jackson, I think we're going to lose even more people out of Jackson. And if, for those of you that have seen this online petition, people are leaving comments saying, "You close that school, see you later, West Bend." And, you know, a piece done, and I talked privately about how much of the tax dollars come from the Jackson district, and if we're 5.2 billion, over a billion has to be coming from the village in south of Paradise, and I don't know if that's a number you're looking to get for us, but they contribute heavily to our district.
And we're going to try to have for you what's the valuation of the district south of Pleasant Valley Road, okay? Paradise, even though that's a lot of growth there, but Paradise from Pleasant- Paradise to Pleasant Valley, that really is kind of thought more of West Bend, but when you get Pleasant Valley south and you got, now that's, most of those kids would go to a Jackson Elementary. And so not saying yes or no, but you guys, that those are decisions that you're going to have to make that are going to be challenging ones because we've got to be able to sell the referendum when it's all said and done, too.
I would offer a suggestion, I would go to NN, not just Pleasant Valley. I- I would stop at NN. I'd like, yeah, NN, so.
I, yeah, I live in the town of West Bend, I'm south of NN, and I'm Jackson.
Okay. So good luck, Andy.
Yeah, and I would say following on to Nancy's question about growth, and certainly look forward to seeing the Jackson vision, but I drove through the village over the weekend and coming north on Jackson Drive, I mean, you've got the newer subdivisions, and I think it's Belinsky that's got another section on the west side of Jackson Drive that's opening up. I think there's a lot more build- home building going on in Jackson than there is in West Bend, and my wife and I lived there 25 years ago, it was a village of 4,500, it's 7,200 now. From a growth perspective, I think it's growing faster than West Bend is, and like Joel, I think if we were to leave Jackson without an elementary school, it's just inviting a greater exodus. I did the incremental math on the elementary enrollment, and Jackson Elementary only lost 65 students over this timeframe, second behind McLean, but that's a 15% drop when we've got Green Tree that's off 127, Fair Park that's off 84. And I hate the phrase, "If you build it, they will come," but if we got 62 students that are elementary age that are open and rolling out at our numbers, that's two sections, a little bit more. If we had a new facility there, some percentage of those students would likely stay. Some are closer physically to Slinger, and they'd probably want the, you know, the smaller high school setting and so forth, but I see upside in Jackson if- if this pans out the way that- that a couple of opinions have stated, let's say. I don't mean to try to ask you to contradict the task force, but when we talk about the high school, one of their ideas was to enclose that courtyard.
Yes.
And I think that was my idea when we first toured a long time ago, but anyway.
I think everybody's come up with that.
Everybody's come up with that idea. In fact, my high school where I grew up, they did that. But anyway, task force says we could do that for $2 million. Can it really, and don't answer now, but when we talk about the high school, can that- is that realistic? Could that really be done for $2 million because just looking at the space, looking at what my high school did back in Nebraska, there's more to it than just putting a roof over a green field. I mean, there's electrical and plumbing and bathrooms and heating and cooling, and so anyway, just maybe that's my question for the next go-around is, again, I don't want you to come in and try to contradict what they were saying, but I do want a reality to it, and that might be a question going.
I guess the thing that crossed my mind when I- when I saw that was, it looked like a really nice space. My question was, why would we be adding space at a facility that's going to be having a declining population? So that's what came to my mind.
I love- I love what we saw with the libraries tonight. To me, it kind of begs the question, well, when are we going to do the cafeterias? Why do we have two separate cafeterias? And is that space that could be redone, that's on the first floor even, that, you know, maybe community events could come in and- and use for meeting space or whatever, is there?
We'll get that to the next one, but you got a little challenge in the number of kids going through at one time, so that becomes more of a challenge so that we're not starting at 9:30 with lunch, okay? But those would be questions.
Not doing that, my kid will be starving by 2:30. Do that in five years, I don't care.
I have one that eats at 10:28.
10:28?
10:28. Well, they get up at 5:00 in the morning, so they're probably hungry by now.
That's true.
Any other questions, discussion? I appreciate everybody staying a little late tonight, and our leadership team and everybody. Our next meeting is when?
December 10.
And is that a committee of a whole again?
Yes.
And hopefully Curdo will be here. I do plan on attending the Wasby Convention in January. I put myself down as our delegate. We do need to list an alternate, so I think that's on a Wednesday in January. So if anybody would like to volunteer to be an alternate, please let me and/or Deb know. And Deb, do you know the date just off the top of your head? January 17th or 15th or 22nd or 23rd? Okay.
Yes.
So I promised Deb I'd try to find an alternate, but I do plan on attending, so if you're the alternate, you probably don't have to go, so. Although last year we had a snowstorm, and Tiffany and I, neither one of us went, but...
I can be the alternate.
40 seconds.
I can be the alternate.
Okay, we'll put Chris down. Thank you, Chris. All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.